I'd like to call to order the February 23rd, 2023 meeting of Mayor and Council. I'd like to call on Councilman Tim Carroll to lead us in prayer and then follow that with the Pledge of Allegiance. Everybody rise.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we come to you tonight and thank you so much for all the blessings you continue to provide all of us in our great city. We ask you to continue to be with the men and women in our military. We ask you to be with the people of Ukraine and all others across the world that are in need of your love and your guidance. We ask that you come tonight, help us do our duties as we see it, to do the best job we can for our citizens and be with all of those that live in our city. We ask this in your son's name. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We got out of seat. Before I move on to item two, to approve the minutes from last meeting, I understand we have some leadership lounge class members, current class members in attendance, if they would please stand. I should make this group hang around for the entire meeting before getting their picture. Move on to item two. The councils have time to review the minutes from the February 9th, 2023 regular meeting. Counsel, are there any additions or deletions? Hearing none, seeing none, the minutes are approved by acclamation. We'll move on to item three, ordinances and resolutions. Item A, consideration of our resolution to declare surplus property and authorize the sale of the same as requested by the City of Valdosta. It was tabled at our February 9th, 2023 regular city council meeting. I need a motion to take it off the table just to address it tonight. Motion in a second. All in favor, show of hands. Unanimous, thank you, counsel. It's now before you.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question. Do you think this resolution should declare a complete surplus on Valdosta's land bank?
Yeah, but I'll need, if that's the way you choose to go, counsel, I'll need an easement mentioned in that as well. There's a 50-foot easement that needs to be mentioned in there as well. For utilities, very good. I have a motion before us.
Does that, does that cover us on that?
It does not.
We're looking more for...
Looking more for women. That's his motion. So, that's the motion that... No, I would say that's his motion.
We don't have a second yet, though.
That's what I'm saying, so...
It sure can without a...
That's all I was saying. You have the right to make...
We'll move forward. I have a motion before us. Do I have a second? Hearing no second, I'll accept another.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt this resolution with the 50-foot easement and transferring the land to the land bank from South Barack Obama to South Fry Street.
I have a motion before us that moves to transfer .0829 acres to the Valdosta Lounge County Land Bank Authority on the condition that the city reserves that 50-foot easement. Do I have a second? Motion in a second. Any further comments? All in favor, show of hands. Counsel, thank you. Eric, thank you. All right, item four, bids, contracts, agreements and expenditures. Consideration of bids for the Griffin Avenue and South Patterson Street intersection improvements. Ben O'Dowd, a fantastic engineer, will present. Fantastic. During Engineer Week.
I appreciate it. Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is the presentation for the TIA project at Griffin and South Patterson. Council approved the concept plan for this project in June of 2020. Construction plans were developed and completed and bids were open for this project on February 14th, 2023. The mandatory pre-bid meeting was very well attended. I believe we had five contractors that attended the mandatory pre-bid. We only received actual proposals from two of those contractors, which were Southland Contractors and Standard Contractors. We reviewed both of the bids and detected some discrete math errors. We corrected those math errors and have produced those in the form of a document that you should have attached to the proposal. There were just multiplication math errors and addition math errors. It was a simple mistake. The submitter from Standard was for $748,803.55, and then Southland submitted an initial unit cost proposal to complete the project for $709,652.65, which, as stated above, was corrected to $729,982.65. Notwithstanding, the low bidder for the project was Southland Contractors. The 10% contingency for this project is proposed to be $72,998.27, which brings the cost plus contingency budget for the project to $802,980.92. This is well below the TIA-approved cost of construction of $1,128,000. Stat recommends the approval of this, and I'm here to answer any questions that you may have.
Ben, this may be information you do have or don't have, but are they moving forward with this in unison with the private project that was going to go on that corner? Or is that project still on hold?
So, as of right now, that project is still in permitting. Any familiarity with that area indicates that the floodway, which is the direct flood impact zone which clips that corner, is going to be impacted by the private development, which is fairly normal, but there's some justification that private developers have to go through, basically proving to FEMA that their development does not negatively impact the floodway and that they can quantify that using models. And so they're currently going through the FEMA permitting for that development on the corner. We included a contingency within this bid that covers the city's interests whether they go to production in tandem or whether they go to production in kind of like a lagged production phasing. So, we're covered either way at no additional cost to the city.
You had full knowledge of that project.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Counsel, any other questions for Ben?
I'm scared with Ben, and I want to say it publicly. We keep giving Southland projects, and Southland comes up with weather excuses and et cetera. Southland is one of the bidding for Fry Street, and they have not completed that project. We completely bid for Southland over a year ago. Now we bring Southland in again to bid for something else in our city. Southland will have to come up with a better schedule of completing their projects, otherwise keep getting projects from the city and then they'll complete one at a time. That's what I feel about Southland. But I just feel that they need to give our engineer a deadline, when they're going to start on one project. We need dates, when they're going to start on one project, second project, and the third project.
Yes, Mayor, and to your point, I did meet with them, as I stated, Tuesday this week to get an update on not just the Fry Street project, but viewing the entire matrix of projects that they're currently liable for completing, including Fry Street, West Street, and now this project if it is approved. They have not given me a fully complete construction schedule, but that is something that I can obtain from them.
That's something we need to get from them, because if they can't keep completing contracts, we can go to someone else, whether they're holding them there, but not even starting on a date. We can move to someone else. Maybe there's something there.
I got you.
Councilman, thank you. Counsel, any other questions for Ben?
Ben, are they giving you a reason? Have they given any reasons?
For...
Going back to what Councilwoman said, they...
For the delays on Fry Street.
...or anything?
Other than the obvious delays that we faced early on, I've made it very clear that the construction schedule is paramount on this. I've given them clear guidance moving forward of what the deadline for this, for, you know, again, we're speaking about the Griffin project, but, you know, in tandem with this, I've given them clear guidance that they need to comply with contract deadlines and that there's consequences for not complying with those contract deadlines. So, that's been very made, that's been made very clear to them, so...
If that votes favorable, please make that point and drive that point home to them again, that they've been given notice.
Yes, sir.
Counsel, any other comments, any other questions? Ben, thank you. Counsel, it's before you.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the agenda item as presented.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion in a second, any further comments? All in favor, show of hands. Unanimous, thank you, counsel. Do we have a vote for a reluctant hand?
I think that was conveyed.
Yeah, well, and thank you for bringing that to our attention again. That needs to be. All right, item B, consideration of bids for replacement of the 40-ton HVAC unit for our fantastic Valdosta Police Department Headquarters. Anthony Musco, our Public Works Administrator, to present.
Come in here, Mayor, Counsel. Can you hear me?
We can.
Here to present on Agenda Item Number 3540, consideration of bids for replacement of a 40-ton HVAC unit for the Police Department Headquarters building. History of this unit here, the building is responsible, or the HVAC unit is responsible for the heating and cooling of the air conditioning system for the facility. The current HVAC unit is no longer functional due to the age, condition of the unit. This Agenda item is prepared as an emergency purchase. The building is currently without air conditioning or heat, and repairs are not possible for the system at this time. Please see attached letter and quote. That's on the back where we had, went out to the Gaudin Group, which is a state contractor. Due to their experience and knowledge and everything, they have solicited the replacement of 40-ton HVAC unit to Johnson &amp; Loh, a construction company, to perform the replacement for $352,687.54, which will include the necessary labor, crane parts, other items that may be needed. Options are to approve this emergency purchase and repair, or option two, do not approve the emergency purchase. Recommend that the council approve this emergency purchase and repair the 40-ton unit at the Valdosta Police Headquarters building, prepared for by Gaudin Group and for Johnson &amp; Loh's Construction for the total amount of $3,000, I mean, $352,687.54 for the replacement.
Anthony, thank you. Any questions for Anthony?
May I just ask one question? This is the, this is the building over there on Two Street?
Yes, ma'am. Police Department Headquarters.
Really, and it's been like, not without that air conditioning?
Yes, ma'am. There's no heat nor air right now, none at all.
She's nodding out there.
Yeah, they're in bad need of some help over there, because the unit that's there is like, it's 26 years old, and we've had many, many repairs and everything done on it, and now it's in, it just, it needs to be totally replaced.
There's about a, there's a 20-ton unit that's there, but to provide, make sure that that entire building has the heat and air that it needs, the 40-ton, that's what's needed.
How soon can they get started if we approve this? How soon could they get started if we approve this?
Well, right now, we're looking at, once everything goes through, it's going to take 152 days to get everything brought in, all the parts and everything.
Wow. Gee, man, that's gonna be...
Well, that total amount right there, that takes care of all the labor parts and to take away and dismantle what's there. So, that kind of covers everything.
We looked into renting any of those portables until that gets in place?
It's gonna be hot in the next month, man. It's already hot, so we're just trying to make it comfortable.
We're looking at doing some of that until they, you know, get, get everything going, so...
Anthony, what's the, what's the warranty on this new unit?
The warranty on it? I'd have to look that, that warranty up, but really, it's like six years.
Okay.
Do we have that in writing?
It's... It is. It's a, it's a six years on, on the installation.
Yeah. Do they offer extended warranty?
They do. It was $27,000 for the, for a 10-year, a full 10-year warranty on our parts and, and maintenance.
Are we considering that?
Based off of the, the time, we did look at it, but just looking at the 10, at the $27,000 for the 10 years, we have not decided to move forward with that. But that is an option.
All right. Any other questions for Anthony? All right, Anthony, thank you. Counsel, it's before you.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve this request as presented.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor? Counsel, thank you. Move on to local funding and requests. Item A, consideration of a request for overhaul and service of two master lift station pumps at the Gonto and Remer master lift stations. Jason Barnes, our Assistant Director of Utilities, will present.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This budget funding source is going to come from CP 2353. Little bit of history, we have eight Gonto and Remer master lift stations that have been in service since 2016. These are large, submersible wastewater pumps with four located at each of the two master stations. All pumps require periodic overhaul, and the recommend period to overhaul is six years, and this project is to accomplish planned maintenance prior to pump failure. These submersible pumps are subject to leakage and mechanical wear and tear due to time and exposure in the normal operational environment. We plan to overhaul two pumps during the FY 23 budget cycle. Submersible pump performance degrades over time and require routine replacement of impellers, seals, to maintain reliability and operational efficiency. These pumps are to be overhauled, are two of the eight total 385 horsepower Xylem Flight Model N3312 units. These are sole-source items, and these pumps will be removed and reinstalled by our city employees, our maintenance staff. These pumps will be, then be shipped to the Regional Flight Pump Service Center in Savannah, Georgia for service and overhaul. Plan overhaul of these pumps will minimize the chance of more expensive pump failure at two of our most critical lift stations. We have no spare pumps on hand, so the staff recommends authorization to be approved for the sole-source service for the amount of $70,000. And I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Counsel, any questions for Jason?
What do we do if something happens while these two are getting refurbished?
We, both these pumps, we're going, number three on both of Remer and Gonto have been removed because of some piping issues we have, so we have, there's four located each, so we still have three pumps on the Remer and Gonto that we can still be able to pump when we need to.
Okay. Any further questions?
How long will it take for this to rehab?
We should get them back, and I would say usually pretty two or three weeks should be a long period of time. And they're going to change, change the impellers and the rings, wear rings and everything, so...
Over there.
Daily. I mean, I mean, the maintenance guys are always there making routine checks every, on our lift stations.
Any further questions? Counsel, it's before you. Jason, thank you.
May I like to make a motion that we approve this as presented?
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further comments? All in favor, show of hands. Counsel, thank you. Item B on that section, consideration of a request to abandon a drainage easement located between two parcels on Ridge Road. Ben O'Dowd, our city engineer, will again present.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This request is best discussed around the map that should be included in the Agenda packet. So, Mr. Mooreman approached us in our office on January 18th about abandoning the highlighted drainage easement. He owns both of the affected parcels here, listed as Track One and Track Two. He currently has a property on Track Two, which he's hoping to expand into Track One. In order to do that, he has to combine both of the parcels and remove, or request the removal or abandonment of this stormwater easement, because there's certain, even if we don't have, you know, utilities, stormwater utilities located within the easement, we still have certain rights to that easement, so he's not allowed to build over top of it. He's requested the abandonment of this easement. It's an antiquated easement from when, in the past, the neighborhood was drained by an open-channel ditch section, and curb and gutter was added, and all of this stormwater from the cul-de-sac that's depicted on the map there is now drained into the shorter stormwater easement that you can see kind of in the lower right-hand corner. It's listed as a 20-foot wide drainage easement, and it drains the cul-de-sac into the pond. So, the highlighted drainage easement is no longer in use. We distributed this to all relevant departments and utility providers in the area, and we received no feedback and opposition to the closure of the stormwater easement, and so staff is recommending approval of the abandonment of this stormwater easement.
Counsel, any questions for Ben?
I do, I want to ask a question. You're saying that there's not, really not going to be any liability to the city, because we're closing, they're closing the easement to give city access?
So, there used to be an open channel here, and the open channel is not utilized anymore, and the stormwater division, the city has no interest in utilizing this easement in the future. So, right now, it's, if you go out there, it's just yard. It's just his yard out there, but there's technically an easement on his property which prohibits certain activities like building structures over top of it. And so he's requesting the abandonment of it. It's no longer in use. It serves no purpose to the city, and so for that reason, we recommend abandonment. But yes, ma'am, he's...
That's fine. I just wanted, because we have nothing like any pipes or anything, something go wrong under there, that the city would be...
I understand. No, we have, there's no infrastructure, I may not have said that, but there's no infrastructure underground, above ground of any kind that we have located within that easement.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Ben, thank you. Counsel, it's yours for action.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve this request as presented.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further comments? All in favor, show of hands. Counsel, thank you. Move on to item C, consideration of a request to approve additional American Rescue Plan Act ARPA funding for minor housing repairs. This very, very popular program netted us about 42 repairs, correct?
Yes, correct.
Anitra Riley, our Neighborhood Development and Community Protection Manager, to present.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I come before you requesting additional funding for our ARPA minor housing repairs. Council originally allocated $350,000, and as Mayor has just stated, we were able to assist 42 homeowners. Requesting at a minimum of $500,000 to assist 50 more, at least 50 more homeowners. We will start that, assist at 42, and we'll start at number 43, and we'll continue on if it is approved. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Counsel, any questions for Anitra?
Do we have any pictures of some of the homes that we already repaired?
Yes, ma'am. They were...
In, uh...
We have air conditioning. And we have homes, yes, ma'am.
And some of the ones we had already repaired at one time before, and we came back and did an addition, repaired those homes also, correct?
What, do they?
One, two of the homes we had already done some work on those homes previously, and we came back and approved some areas, some other projects on those same home, correct?
For a CDBG, you mean?
Yeah.
None that I'm aware of.
The town in Florida, over in District One, over on, I think it was the...
Mm-hmm.
We talked about that we were going to go back and do additional work on this person's house, but that all of that is staying in control.
No, ma'am. That's on the CDBG. But she did apply, and she was approved.
Any further questions for Anitra? How many, how many applications do you have so far?
We received 911 applications, and of that, 877 were in the city.
Eight seventy-seven.
Do we do first come, first served, or do we...
Timestamp.
First come, first served. Timestamp, do...
I'm sorry, timestamp, I'm agreeing with you.
Yes, ma'am.
Reasonably asking, but there's a lot of senior citizens in, in certain areas that didn't know about this project, and some of the people that I feel that can still repair the other ones came and applied and were approved, and some of our senior citizens that didn't understand how to do procedure, we didn't get a chance to get those citizens.
Yes, ma'am, but based on the town hall meetings and meetings with our previous city manager, it was first come, first served, and that's how we proceeded.
And Councilwoman, some of the churches have stepped up to try and take on some 10 additional projects after this program is done, working with Anitra and Richard Joyner as well to identify the most needy, so... That's kind of a pilot project. They, they didn't want to get too ambitious and think they could take on too many more than that. Are there any other questions for Anitra?
We didn't have this, the application wasn't online.
No, it was not.
Any way we can make that happen?
At the time, a lot of senior citizens would call, and they felt like they were at a disadvantage to the millennials who had access to technology, so to make it fair, we required that everyone come in and get an application.
They would still be at a disadvantage, assuming a younger person could get there faster than they would.
Well, this, we're not, we're no longer taking applications for this project.
Okay, so how many are approved out of what you do have?
We've done 42.
So, you only approve as the funds are available?
Yes.
Okay.
And how many works, workshops do we hold, do?
Yes, two town hall.
I can, Chris, I can, I can say she did help the seniors that came up here, but a lot of them did come to make that they at the bottom of the list, and that's my concern of the senior citizens that have a disadvantage, and their homes are almost falling in, that they need repairs, and by the time we get those, if there's 800, by the time we get to 700, there will be no money for those to do. That's the only problem, of course, how she did it, she did it to determine to help them.
Now, I can say with our CDBG, we did have a lot of elderly come in this time. Now, with them, I will mail the application if they call me, or request one, I will do that for them. But with our regular housing program, a lot of seniors did come in early to request the application.
Counsel?
I just want to make sure that everyone is clear on this. Once we approve, if this gets approved, it's only going to do another 50 home?
Well, it'll probably do probably 50 to 100, because not every project, I only had probably four projects, four or five, that really actually cost the $10,000. That's why we're able to assist more people.
I just didn't want people to think that the six, it's going to get into six and 700, that's what I didn't think.
No, it's not. I would say probably, it may get up to 100.
Okay. Any further discussion, any other questions?
I'm just curious, what are the type of repairs you're seeing? Which ones are most prevalent?
Roofings.
Roofing. Hmm.
A lot of roofers.
A lot of roofing.
Because a lot of seniors have buckets in their homes and et cetera.
Ma'am?
I said, a lot of our seniors have buckets up in their homes, that the roofs are falling in.
Mm-hmm.
The case parties do have, have some consequences.
Well, the ones that were like that, they qualified for the CDBG emergency roofing. We did 10 of those, so we do have that program for that. So, we do assist that way.
Counsel, any further questions? Anitra, thank you. Counsel, it's before you.
May I like to make a motion that we approve this additional $500,000 that's requested?
Second.
A motion in a second. Any further comments? Counsel? All in favor, show of hands. Excellent, thank you. We'll move on to item six, citizens to be heard. It's a portion of the meeting. We ask you come, to come forward and state your name and address so we may have it for the record. Our policy requires you stay under three minutes so that others have time to be heard. Please direct all comments to council as a whole. Do not attempt to engage individual members of council in debate. It is our policy to follow through with you on your concern. Additionally, we ask that any groups that want to address the council designate one spokesperson, and in turn allows everybody time to be heard. Having said that, are there any citizens wishing to come forward now at this time?
Diana Deely, I live at...
Diana Dealy, I live at 201 West Gordon Street here in Valdosta. The corner of Tooms and Gordon, we have had, according to my neighbor, 27 accidents there since 2017. Gordon does not stop, Tooms does. However, a lot of people evidently think that there is, it's a fullway stop. The simplest solution, I think, would be to get those little yellow placards that read "Cross traffic does not stop" and attach them to the stop signs. I would really, I think that would knock down the number of accidents. We've had like three in less than a month, be nice not to have that happening anymore. Happens in front of our house every about once a month. Anyway, that's all.
Thank you, and it's a very tight turn coming out of Gordon and onto Tooms as well.
Yeah, that's not a great turn.
Thank you very much. Are there any other citizens wishing to be heard at this time? See how fast we address it?
Do you think a fullway stop sign would be good?
That was nice. I'm sorry.
Do you think a fullway stop sign would be good?
No, probably additional curb cut there though to get them onto Tooms. Yeah. Any other citizens wishing to be heard at this time? Please state your name and address.
Hello, my name is Jeffrey Copeland, I sit at 506 North Tru Street. My concerns are the heavy foot traffic that's on Tru Street. Are we allowed, can we get traffic lights like the city has here? I mean, we're close enough to downtown in the historic district, and it's very heavy foot traffic, which I, the homeowner, have to do more to clean one of my yard because of other citizens. Also, another concern I have is for the safety of those citizens as well, can, very poor lighting. I understand that there are so many limits per light such I have, but the problem we have is trees that are covering those, creating very dark areas. A concern is safety in that area. As you know, that's, the area is a heavy crime area, so I'm trying to create safety in the area as well as clean it up some. I understand that there are people that are supposed to pick up trucks on the area, but again, kind of being responsible to different things, so I'm trying to see if maybe the city can help us out, you know, have some extra trucks that I use from down in downtown area to maybe go to our Tru Street and help us with some of the heavy foot traffic there, and also with their lights. The third thing I want to bring up is the very high demand and supply in the area, and we want to keep it clean, if you know what I mean. If there is no supply, there is no demand, so I understand that I can add extra police officers to the area, but we have to get rid of those that are buying the product. So those guys that are picking up young ladies, if you can understand what I'm saying.
Again.
My daughters, neither my sons. So I'll ask some of the means in the, in the organization to push the public down the road where we want to go. Jeffrey, thank you.
Jeffrey, thank you, and if you hang around until after the meeting, a couple of people will approach you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other citizens wishing to be heard at this time? Seeing none, I'll turn it over to our interim city manager, Richard Hardy, for the city manager's report.
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. This Saturday, we invite everyone out to a Love Where You Live Adopt a Road cleanup from, on February the 25th, 9:00 a.m. to noon. The location where we're meeting up at is North Lee Street, well, we're going to clean up North Lee Street from East Park Avenue to East Gordon Street. The meeting location is at the corner of 400 East Gordon and North Lee Street. Next event we're having is the Isaiah After Dark scheduled March the 10th through the 11th. The city will host on that Saturday at Unity Park, 5:30 to 8:30 p.m. And I know this, this is your favorite, Bluesberry Festival at Unity Park, Friday, April the 14th, 6:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m., and Saturday, April the 15th, noon to 10:00 p.m. Another of your favorite, the Fourth Annual Mayor and Chairman's Paddle, Walworth Watershed Coalition in Swanee, scheduled for Saturday, May, March the 4th, at the Tru, Truville Boat Route, beginning at 8:00 a.m. in the morning. That's all I have.
Come, let your inner hippie shine there, paddle along with us. We've added that two-mile takeout this year to the 11-mile paddle, we'll, we'll be going the full 11 miles, but we wanted to be respectful of the South Georgia Film Festival who's joining us on the paddle this year, they have to get back to their festival, their festival is also that weekend, the 3rd, 4th, and 5th. The kickoff will actually be on the 3rd out at Valdosta Mall. They're going to preview a couple of the local films, the, the one shot up in Tifton, and the one that was shot over in Quipman with a different film effort, those two are going to be previewed that night, and then the film festival will go all weekend too. And it's seventh year it's going into quite a festival, it truly has. Counsel, I'll turn it over to you, any council comments?
Today I attended the GRC, and they have a drone that might have helped Mr. Jeffrey, and the city can use that drone to, like as we put in our private, we could go before, at someone's home to see how that private was laid, and the drone can go through and show, then you can come back, that way the citizens or the customers cannot say that the city damaged their property and etc. And it's, my understanding...
Free?
...paying for the uses of that drone, so if there's a problem, we might be give that drone to fly in certain areas to see what we can do to help.
Is that something we just have to request?
Yes.
Beautiful.
Yeah, request it. Also, you have to be careful with booty, because they can come out of foot from where they locate their, before that drone in, and they seem to know chief or someone is standing by their side, to say we have that drone.
You only get a 500-foot view, otherwise you're up inside.
I don't know.
So, we have, we need to use that drone to help in certain areas of the town, and we have it at no charge for Jeffrey, paying the uses of it.
Beautiful, beautiful. Any other council comments at this time? Hearing none?
So moved.
I entertain a motion for adjournment.
Aye.
All in favor, show of hands.
We stand adjourned.